Okay, I will call to order the roll seal. Order of Commissioner's Work Session, this is April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We've got a few items on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to take care of those. I do want to just make a special note that Commissioner Long is with us tonight. He's he's remote, he's out of town on some business. He will be actively participating in the in the meeting. And we will be implementing our remote, remote meeting rules tonight, I think. So it is a little twist to those, and if this comes up, we will take care of those as it come up. So with that, welcome to board, welcome to people. Looks like we've got a good turnout here. Welcome everybody that's watching online. Beautiful day, we're getting ready to have some some good weather and excited about that. So with that.
Mayor Curran.
Yes, sir.
Can you confirm that Commissioner Long can hear you and can hear the board and can be heard?
Can we, should we be able to see him up there?
When he talks, you will hear him.
Okay. So Commissioner Long, can you hear us?
I can hear you great, can you hear me?
I can hear you a little, take his volume up a little bit.
Testing one, two, testing one, two.
Perfect, all right, well, thank you.
Good evening and thank you.
Yep, very good. Any questions from board, anything to start with? If not, our first item is a continuation of legislative hearing MA twenty-two dash oh eight and annexation twenty-two oh five Harris Creek Farms. We have had this public hearing and it was closed in our first meeting in April. It was a several conditions, three, three or four conditions with the approval that attorney and applicant was working on. And I think we are in position to move forward with that, is that correct, attorney?
The applicant did deliver to the Planning Department and to my office a revised set of conditions that I believe Meredith will review and did incorporate the comments that I had provided to the applicant. I don't know if there were other changes.
Great. So so being a public hearing is closed, we had, you know, prolonged public hearings on this, being it is closed, I will take a a report from the staff, updated report from the staff, and then maybe a follow-up report from an attorney if he has anything to add. And then I'll turn it over to board to ask anybody any questions in attendance here, and and then we'll take it to vote. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Any opposition? Linwood, are you okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Okay, well, sounds good. All right, Meredith, we're ready for your report.
Great, thank you, Mayor Curran, good evening. So this is MAP Amendment twenty-two oh eight and Annexation twenty-two oh five for Harris Creek Farms, continued from the meeting earlier this month. Just a quick reminder, this is about ninety-five acres and nineteen tracts of land located on the western side of Jonesville Road, south of Universal Drive. So the applicant has updated the conditions since the meeting two weeks ago, and we'll go over just those updated conditions, and then you can let me know if you have any questions. So there's actually one updated condition and three new conditions. Condition thirteen about the possibility of paving Universal Drive has been updated. The applicant has added that if it is paved, it will be paved to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Standard Pavement Section, and that is a particular course of ABC stone and then a particular, I think it's two inches of asphalt on top of that. So that has been, that is the update to the Universal Drive condition. Condition fourteen is new, and that has to do with a historical monument. So the applicant is offering to dedicate a ten-foot by ten-foot area for a historical marker. And condition fifteen is new, and that has to do with the naming of roads within the community. And condition fifteen notes a formal request for receiving suggestions from the Jonesville community on what to name the roads in Harris Creek Farms. And condition sixteen is new, and that has to do with blasting, and it provides information about notification and safeguards. For example, many, several residents were concerned about having their properties checked out prior to any blasting. So the condition notes sixty days prior to any blasting, there is an opportunity for an assessment of each person's property, so you can document the condition of it before the blasting takes place. And it's fairly detailed. And that is all for the conditions. Do you have any questions about those?
Any questions from the board? Linwood, were you able to hear that, and do you have any questions for Meredith?
I was able to hear, and I do not have questions at this time, Mayor, thank you for asking.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
All right. So with that, attorney, do you have any additional information to give on the conditions that Meredith talked about?
No, sir, I do have the text of the conditions open here at my desk if there are any questions.
Any questions for the attorney?
No, sir.
No.
Anybody? Linwood, did you have questions for Dave? Commissioner Long, do you have any questions for Dave?
I do not, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I ask the board and Commissioner Long, y'all have any questions from Meredith or the staff or the applicants, anybody here tonight? Any follow-up questions?
No.
No, sir.
All right.
Just thank you for the updates of the, all the conditions.
Thank you, Meredith, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so not hearing any, I will turn it over to board, I think Meredith put up the the options that for motions there. So I will turn it over to board at this time.
If there's no questions, I move to approve rezoning MAP Amendment Request MA two-two dash zero eight Harris Creek Farms.
Okay, so I got a motion to approve, is that right, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, it is correct.
Motion to approve is in the second.
I'll second.
So it was second from April. Madam Clerk, does this require a hand vote, being this remote, does it?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, so I'll call the roll.
And I'll call your name in alphabetical order if you would just indicate aye or no. Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Snee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bill?
Aye.
Okay, that motion approves unanimously. You'll continue?
Yes, sir. Move to adopt a plan consistency statement and statement of reasonableness for MA two-two dash zero eight.
Okay, I got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's second, Commissioner Beagle's second, any other discussion from the board? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Again, in alphabetical order, Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Snee? Aye.
Commissioner Bill?
Aye.
Okay.
And move to approve the voluntary annexation petition received under General Statute one-six-zero Alpha dash three-one-four annexation two-two dash zero five Harris Creek Farms. Second.
Second.
All right, I heard Commissioner Long second that, is any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor say, well.
Roll call.
Do a roll call.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Snee? Aye.
Commissioner Bill?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you, board, I think all all of them approved unanimously, appreciate that. Thanks, thanks applicants, good job of working on those conditions. I want to thank the community and the people associated with the community, thank y'all for coming out, and, you know, I think it's a lot, it's a lot of good things kind of surfaced during this process, especially around that Jonesville area that I think we'll continue to work on. So appreciate you guys sharing information with us, so thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, now we're going to move into some some partnerships we have here, one of them is with the Chamber of Commerce Memorandum of Understanding for Budget Requests. I see two people up, so who's going to present first? Is it you, Philip?
I think it is.
Okay, all right, well, Philip.
He doesn't think, he just knows it, it's me.
Okay. Well, Philip, if you would, state your name, address, and for this situation, maybe a title.
My name is Philip Carter, I'm the Director of the Roseville Chamber here in Roseville, and I do bring a couple of friends along with me to back me up on this. Let me introduce our Chairman of the Board, Ken Adrian. We also have a couple of directors with us as well, Susan Crumpler, Dick Armon. Oh, and our, one of our newest directors, Gwen Bailey, has joined us as well. Missed anybody out there? And a cast of thousands, so. How do we proceed? I've never actually done one before.
Let Michael do it, then.
You're all set.
Okay.
Well, yeah, let me, I'll say a few words just to start us off. Thanks, good evening, everyone.
Well, this is under your department, right, Mike?
Yes, yes.
So you kind of falls under your umbrella, your budget.
Definitely, and just, you know, the tie into economic development and supporting our business community. And it's it's that time of year again where we take a look at our partnership with the chamber and revisit our memorandum of understanding right in the springtime of budget season. So this is that opportunity, and the chamber is here to talk about some of their activities and where they see themselves going in the future. And they've submitted a proposed MOU for the next fiscal year, and if, you know, this is a chance also for us to provide feedback to that MOU, not too many changes from the previous year, and we can, we can make tweaks to that, and if all looks good by the end of the night, then we can go back and finalize that, and that could be presented on the consent agenda at one of our following meetings, so. But tonight, we're just here to hear about chamber activities and things they're doing.
Yeah, I think, I think just for being this remote meeting atmosphere tonight, I think we're just taking this information purposes only.
Yep.
And and surely we will have a final product approved by the time Amy does the budget, for sure.
Yep.
So, so, yeah, just kind of maybe a high level, make the board aware of kind of what you're asking for in this this MOU for next, next year.
Four letters, less, L-E-S-S, less, I'm asking for less. Has anybody ever done that?
Not often, that's why, that's why we're a little bit skeptical, I guess.
Showstopper. All right. I came on board in December, and thank you for introducing me a couple of months ago. I'm excited, there is so much that we can do, there is so much we haven't done because there was nothing to do it for over the years past, with the opportunity in front of the town, in front of the resident, residential citizens, our business citizens, the the chamber has so much work in front of it, there's so many activities we could do to really accentuate what the town is doing, and it's what gets me really excited about some of the stuff that we're going to talk about tonight. It's, I'm kind of coupled with the tagline, and I would say I did this on my own, but I have a really good partner in crime, and most of y'all know that I use ChatGPT, and that is, with many iterations, a tagline I want to use going forward, your chamber, your future, where tradition meets transformation. And that's what I have seen over the last three years, there's a lot of tradition here, there's a lot of history, and I want to use that to transform us for where we're going in the future with the chamber. Our mission statement, the mission of the Roseville Chamber of Commerce is to enthusiastically and passionately promote and serve our, and support our members, the town, and surrounding areas through the community involvement committees, meetings, and information. We have lots of members, and the slide is absolutely not complete, and probably, it is as current as I can make it, but that's only probably thirty of our two, one hundred and seventy members. Our vision statement, the Roseville Chamber of Commerce will lead the economic development of the community by providing opportunities for business growth, by serving as an advocate in civil participation, and by promoting educational incentives. We want to provide benefits to our business membership, that is not just having great events and happy hours, business after hours, it's providing an opportunity for them to come together to learn, and we're doing a lot of stuff with that as well. The meat of the subject, and I guess I'd like to just talk through line by line, give you a couple of highlights on each one of these events, or each one of these lines, and if you have any questions, please ask me, and I'll be, those of us that are here would be happy to respond to you. Launch Roseville, we did not do that in the spring, we didn't see that we had the resources to do it in terms of manpower, we were reconfiguring our Board of Directors, our committees, starting in January, our Board of Directors is actually stepping up, each director is going to own an initiative or an event. We didn't have that in January for Launch Roseville, so we made a decision as a board to pause Launch Roseville for the spring, but we're coming back in the fall with it, so that's why it's still in the budget here.
So you typically do that twice a year?
I believe so, twice a year, correct?
I didn't realize that.
So we're all about, let's bite off what we can chew, and let's chew the heck out of it, we didn't have enough bite power to accomplish that, with everything else, it was already on the agenda for us in the spring. So moving on, military appreciation, we are sponsoring, that's not a lot, a big line item on there, but it's very important to us, we're promoting, promoting the heck out of that on social media right now and graphics. Ken, Adrian's going to put a a sandwich board in front of Granite Falls for registration for that, we're expecting to have, what, seventy-five?
Hopefully.
Hopefully for that?
Maybe more.
And that's something we're, as you know, we're providing free of charge for those that participate. Business after hours, Commissioner Snee knows, these are my personal favorites, it's getting together and not just doing what's important, making connections, but having fun, giving it, providing an opportunity, whether it's at a business, a restaurant, or a bar, where membership can come together with the general public and make connections, but also, if you want to sit around and throw business cards and do the the dataholic way of networking, you know, here's my business card, what do you do, what do you do? Or, you know, pick somebody you met the last time and sit down, have a refreshment with them, and get to know them even better. You don't have to talk to everybody there, go talk to one person, get to know them, about building relationships. So Business After Hours is going to continue to do that, we have a pretty good roll call of sponsorship of businesses throughout the rest of the year. We do still have a few openings I'd like to fill, if you know anybody, a business owner that would like to bring thirty or forty people in on a Thursday night, please let us, let us know. We can host it at their business, or we can host it at one of our local area establishments. The Lunch and Learn Series, this has gone through a change. It used to be on the calendar very regularly, we didn't, in January, when I looked at this, we really didn't have a lineup, we didn't really have a list of speakers, there wasn't anybody really pushing it within the chamber. What we are doing now is with the board, we're saying, hey, if we have somebody What we are doing now is with the Board, we're saying, hey, if we have somebody who wants to come in, like Yolanda Taylor, attorney, if she wants to come in and talk about estates, or if Commissioner Paul wants to come in and talk about some other aspect of legal support for the community, we'd love to have them come in and let us know. We are reaching out. We are letting people know that we've got a lot of openings there. And as we get those people who are interested in speaking, we'll promote the heck out of it and try to get, say, ten or fifteen people into the Chamber to listen to the conversation. So we do have a speaker next, no, for April next week, I believe. No, it's this week. It's this week, this Thursday. David Williams, I think it's Adventures From the Couch, Adventures Beyond the Couch. He's a men's health coach. So he'll be talking. So everybody here that's over thirty-five, that, who, raise your hand, is not happy with their current, no, don't. If you have an interest in how to improve your health, and yes, it's very focused on men's health for this one on Thursday, but ladies do come as well. So we have a program throughout the year. We're filling in spaces for that. The Ambassador Program. I've got six ambassadors. That's not enough. I need twice that, literally. We keep promoting them to directors. Gwen Bailey was ambassador, and we made her a director. So we're going to go on a recruiting binge to try to get, say, twelve ambassadors. And what do the ambassadors do? They're the face of the Chamber. You can say I am, but I've only got so many hours in the day. I want to be able to have people out there that are bonding with our membership. In other words, we'll take the membership of one hundred and seventy members, divide that by however many ambassadors we have. Those ambassadors are responsible for touching them at least once a month. Email, give them a call, inviting them to events as well. When we do get a new member, we like to have our ambassadors take a goodie bag out and introduce the Chamber to them and say, not new members, but new business in town. Our ambassadors are ambassadors to those new businesses. So that's a great program that's still on the schedule for us. Youth Leadership. We just had a graduation last.
Week.
Last week. How many do we have, Susan? Do you remember?
It was, I believe, nineteen. And as of today, they're, they just started interviewing for next year, and they had eighteen students that did apply for it.
I will say, this is one of our most important programs, and we're actually thinking about having a youth ambassador group from that as well to help flesh out our ambassadors. I will say this. I sat through the presentations. I saw the energy level in the room. It was a gut check. It was an ego check. I am no longer qualified to be a professional in this world. When you see these young professionals coming up, they're going to push us right off the map. It was exciting to see the energy level and their ideas. I certainly wasn't thinking about that when I was seventeen or eighteen years old. I was focused on some of the same things, but nothing close to where this group of kids was. It was amazing to see. So Youth Leadership, very important program for us. We're actually throwing money into it beyond, we're asking for more, M-O-R-E, on this one. Annual Dinner. This year was my first chance to see the Roseville Chamber's Annual Dinner. It was not as heavily as tended as we wanted to be. We sold about seventy-five tickets. I think we had about forty people show. This is a rebuilding year. We are glad it went off without a hitch. We had great entertainment. We had a great DJ, Alan Smith. What's his DJ name?
Owski. DJ Owski.
Owski, Owski. He's, Alan Smith's one of our directors as well. So we all had a great time. It was a Western theme. This is something we're going to rebuild this year. We're going to look for a hundred, one hundred and twenty-five attendees next year. We broke even on it. Actually, we made a couple thousand dollars on it. So it worked out. Because, you know, the, I will say this, this is why we need more ambassadors. This is why we need a few more directors. We've got a couple of open slots. We have done a great job, from what I've seen over the last year, of taking a small group of volunteers and burning them into the ground. I'm not happy about it. We are going to lose these great people if we don't spread the workload among more volunteers. So the dinner, the, and I'll talk about Women's Leadership Brunch. A lot of these events, we pulled off by, excuse me, by the skin of our teeth. Because we, over the last year, without an executive director in place, we didn't have anybody building a directorship, we didn't have anybody building an ambassadorship group. We really were short on resources. And the fact that we actually were able to pull off things like the Annual Dinner successfully speaks a lot to this very small group of volunteers that we do have. So that is one of the first things I saw when I came on board, said, we got to fix this. We can't burn these people out. And I see Commissioner Sneed nodding. I believe she's been in that position before and knows what I talk about. Annual Dinner, Roseville Business Saturday. Asking for the same thing. That's something we do just to help out the town as well. Barbecue Bands. Let's take a moment to talk about barbecue and bands. I'm sure you have some questions of why we didn't do it last year, where the money went. This is actually where we're taking money off of the budget. We're not asking for as much money this year. Well, because we didn't spend the money last year. We still got it, except for about twenty-two, twenty-four hundred dollars, which went to mowing and some other expenses up to the event before it was canceled for 2023. So going forth, 2024, we're working with some of the Commissioners here to actually rebuild this event to be more than barbecue and bands. We haven't really got a, it might still be barbecue and bands. We're thinking of some other names. Barbecue Ribs, Rhythm and Bands, I don't know. Something that's going to be more inclusive, something that's going to bring in a broader stretch of the community. So we're going to go forth. We've got a great location, I think, picked out. That's behind Sanford Elementary and the volleyball club, the tail end of the town park. There's a kind of a natural grass amphitheater in there behind that wood rail fence. I think that's, and I've heard people in this room tell me, that's not big enough. And they've heard me say, I would be very happy if the largest amount of complaints had to do with, I couldn't even get in there, it was so crowded. I would love that. So if we had fifteen hundred people instead of three thousand people, and we had an event like that, and we had a good flow and a good crowd, and everybody had a good time, let's not think small, let's think complete. Let's think performance. Let's perform well. Let's create a great event and make it happen well. So we've got that place. We've applied for permit for it. I think it's been approved. It has been approved. Okay, so we have a location. That's important. We're working with a, hopefully working with an event planner that will do for one price, soup to nuts, coordinate the bands, coordinate the public safety, coordinate the cooks, the contest, everything for one price. Again, why is that attractive? Because we just don't have a huge fleet of ambassadors or even professionally trained people to run a great event like this. So that's one thing the Board is also looking at, is where appropriate on an event, maybe the dinner, maybe barbecue bands, the Christmas Parade, for sure, bring in a professional event planner to do some part of the planning, if not the execution of the event. And we're asking the directors who are chairs of these events to put that planning, that planner into their budget going forward as well. Anything else you want to ask me about the barbecue bands?
What's the date?
Date? September? September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth, okay.
Moving on, Christmas Parade. I, that was my first event I went to. I'd just been on board for about a week, and I thought it went great. And then I heard the after-action meeting, and I went, oh, wow. Never even saw all that going on. There was, there were problems. There was a bit of a, I refer back to the movie Animal House, when the band goes down the alley and the trombones crumple in the back of the alley. Everybody jammed in. Apparently, that's what happened at the Baptist Church across from the Chamber. There were supposed to be people going in at the end of the parade, and they were supposed to be flowing out. Well, it didn't happen. So everybody flowed in and nobody left. It was a huge crowd, a lot of confusion. We did meet with the police chief, talked about how that occurred. There was a breakdown in communications on both sides. So we talked about how to prevent that next year. So we are, we are moving fast and furious towards another successful Christmas Parade. Everybody had a good time. They enjoyed it. I didn't realize there were that many kids at Music Academy South and the other dance academies, or the other dance academies out there. I was, you know, for what I heard in the after-action report, I, wow, it was a great event. Any questions about, I'm sure, you were there. What did you think about the event, Mayor Curran?
Christmas Parade is always a good event. We've been drawing a good, a good crowd. And, you know, most people don't see those logistical problems.
I was in the middle of it, and I didn't see it.
So, you know, it was a great event. I really think it was.
I will say that the only thing I saw, I was checking licenses and IDs to make sure everybody was twenty-one and had a valid driver's license when they were driving a float. And the only two that didn't qualify that I, that I had to figuratively tell to get out of the seat and let somebody else drive were, they were actually a couple of town employees. I'm not going to name the department, but it was pretty funny. There was an eighteen-year-old that showed me a vertical license, and I went, well, number one, you're not twenty-one, it's a vertical license. Number two, this license is expired. The other one was, oh, I'm twenty-one, and he shows me a license, it's a vertical license, he just turned twenty-one, and it's expired. But we got that taken care of. That was, that was the only problem I saw with it. Any other questions on the parade? All right, moving on. Golf Tournament. Dick Armont is planning our golf tournament. He is the director in charge of this. We have a location, we have a date. We are, our biggest challenge here is building sponsorships and proving, we had a good tournament last year, not well-attended, as well as it could have been, and not as well-sponsored as it could have been. We recognize those two problems, and that's what we're going to work on going forth. All right? We're going to be back at Heritage, October.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. So we're going forward with that. And we're looking for a little bit more money because prices did go up on hosting it there. Website, technology, and branding. So coming in from Nerds2Go, like I did, my former company, this is kind of a very sensitive topic for me. What I'm seeing that I am fixing right now is redundancy. We have four different cloud services to store documents, going way back to 2013. You probably used Dropbox when you were at the Chamber. You probably used Google, OneDrive. We got all those, and we're paying for them. We don't need to be paying for them. So what I'm doing is cutting, finding where we want to use and cutting back the excess and reducing our expenditures in that area. Welcome Wagon. Not much to say about that. We're going to continue to do that. That's the goodie bags we're putting together for new members. Women's Leadership Brunch, that was a great event. We had, it was well-attended. The food was fantastic. I didn't go to it, but I hear all these great things about it. One thing I did hear that we want to fix going forth, going back to having enough volunteers to spread the load. Our director who chaired that, Toni Canyon with Concinity Health, she was like, in the after-action meeting, she was, what would you, you were there, Ken, what would you, what was her basic attitude? It was.
At the Women's Leadership Brunch?
After the brunch, after.
Well, I mean, it was a great event, and I'm not sure what you're asking me.
She had taken a lot upon herself, and she was, she was fried.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. It's the same thing. It's many hands make light work. We need engagement, we need involvement. You know, we talked about different initiatives, and my pet phrase right now is, come on down. We can use your help. We'll plug you in, and that's, it's tough for one person to take all that on. No question.
Question for you, or just a comment? With the youth leadership being a success like it is, them young kids would love to probably volunteer to do some of these events, and that could be good mentorship for them as well, not as part of the youth leadership, but just for volunteer hours for things like that.
That's exactly what we were talking about. We were talking about how we build this into the organization, and that organization is youth ambassadors. So we create a youth ambassador group, and then we can take, that's how we communicate through that to find out how we can get them into some of the events as supporting our helpers. So exactly, exactly that. And they're eager to do it, too.
Yes.
Very much so. Business Expo, right out. I've been to several of these throughout the area with different chambers. You know what it is? And I paid for ten-by-ten booths at these places. We're not doing it because we just didn't see the draw. We didn't see the value to our members. Walk away from the microphone. What I saw at other events is, hey, it's great if you want to get to know the other vendors at the show, who can be your customers and can be referral partners for you as a small business. They don't draw a lot of foot traffic. So we have decided, again, bite off what you can chew. This is one of the things we want to take off and redirect the money to other places. Insurance, fairly stable. We've got all of the insurance policies that we think we need for the Chamber, including women's comp, office and directors liability, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So all in all, what we did last year, we asked for twenty-nine this year, reportioning, taking some stuff off, we're asking for less, twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that's all I got. But I'll go back to that if you have any questions.
Yeah. Board, do you have any questions? I think. Any questions?
Hey, Philip. Looks good. I'm encouraged. Hopefully, it all goes well. One thing, I'm new here. I haven't seen the books. You've made the offer. I'd like to see the financial statements for the Chamber.
We'd love to do that. I think we're trying to get together to set up a meeting with you and Teresa at the moment, aren't we? Yes. You guys had just gotten back from.
Yeah, but this is a different capacity.
Okay.
As Commissioner.
Understood.
Okay.
Can we cover two initiatives in one meeting?
We may. We'll figure that out.
Work through that.
Yeah.
We're more the merrier, and nothing to hide. We'd love to get input on it, for sure.
Appreciate it.
I can address that quickly, and then you can have the numbers.
Sure.
Based on the fact that we, I took the position in January, we hired Philip in December, and as we're formulating our year, we're certainly behind. So we're taking the 2023 budget. That's going to be our template, those are going to be our numbers.
Ken, Ken, mind stepping up so we can get kind of, get you.
Sorry, Ronnie.
Get you on record.
Yeah, I got you. Sorry about that. So we're using the 2023 template, so our budget is going to look very similar to, it's going to be similar to last year, almost to the penny. That's why this MOU fits in very well with what we've requested in the past, percentage-wise, and what we're using it for. Our overall operating budget is around one hundred and twenty-five thousand in revenue and expenses, so we can detail that for you. And our treasurer, Ms. Kathy Uvegas, couldn't make it tonight. She had a death in the family, but she's got that materials and can get it to you post haste.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Okay. I'll stay with you.
I have one question. So you, you're asking for less. The barbecue, you've reserved twenty-five, twenty-six hundred dollars, something along those lines. There's only one thing on there that you said you're increasing because the prices There's only one thing on there that you said you're increasing because the prices went up.
Okay.
What's the case with the rest of them? Is it because you just find it, oh, is it your event planner that you're using? Is it? Tell me the reasoning behind the increases in here.
In general, it's because prices have increased for supplies and labor and services. Each budget shows individual lines where prices have gotten more expensive.
Very good.
Does that answer your question? I mean, if you go down. Sorry, I'm sorry Phillip.
If you, if you just go down where the, with youth leadership, our contract is going to increase with our consultant. With the annual dinner, we're going to have more people, we're going to need more money for that. For the Christmas parade, again, float prices have gone up. Golf tournament, again, it's participants, that's driving the increase on that one. And then Women's Leadership Brunch, it's a combination of both increased costs and more people. When we had our discussions, that's, that's where we decided to allocate, keeping in mind our total.
Okay.
Good question, Ms. April.
A thought to pile on, Commissioner Paul's question. We hired a bookkeeper in February, Cindy Toons, a local business owner. So she is currently hoovering last year's numbers, last year's QuickBooks, and I'll be straight up, she hasn't finished closing out 2023 yet. It between?
Question?
Yes, Linwood, Commissioner Long.
My, my question is going to be around sponsorship as well as things of that nature. How are you managing and getting in sponsors? Would that be a benefit to the chamber? How do we do that as well? Sponsor what is progress?
Sponsorships has been a challenge in 2023 and we can take, we can use all the help we can get on that. It's, it's me, it's my ambassadors, my directors, all going out to our friends, Romans and countrymen to solicit donations and sponsorships. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Long?
He has a delay.
Sort of, but yeah, I'm good. Thank you. We'll talk more.
All right. With that?
Yeah, just to follow up with Commissioner Paul's question. I was thinking, Michael, either Amy, maybe my, I thought we had official process to get that to one of you annually, don't we?
Yes, upon request, I think in the past we've received financial documents, so.
Because I would, I would suggest, you know, anybody that wants, you know, just check with Michael or Amy, either one probably will have it because it's probably, it's required part of the record here or so.
Right.
Do we get it every year, Michael?
Upon request. The way the MOU is written, it's kind of upon request, so we can start doing that and we can set an annual date or, but we haven't got one for this year yet, so.
Yeah.
Do you know when we got the last one?
Probably a year and a half or so ago.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was before the last thing, because it's required.
Right.
Part of the agreement. So, you know, it's required for us. So I think I heard him say today, almost finishing up this year, working on it, but let's just do that rather than kind of bugging them individually. You know, I think that's better. I thought, I thought we had a process for that already.
Yeah. They would send it in to me and I would share it upon request.
One last announcement for the chamber. Barbara Timmons is leaving us next Thursday. She is moving, she's currently studying for her real estate exam and will be working with Five Star Realty as a residential realtor. We've already hired her replacement, Tammy Johnson Blunt, has joined us last week and is working in the chamber, downloading what's in Barbara's brain. And I think you will see a, a wonderful presence now in the chamber with Tammy. She's a delight, she's been with me for two years at Nerds2Go. So board voted without me, they still hired her. I'm looking forward to bringing her on board. And I'm done.
Well, thank you.
So thank you much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good job for your first one, Phillip.
Yeah, thank you much. Linwood, you okay? Any follow-up from remote?
Well, yes, I'm fine. Phillip, you did a great job for your first one. I'm going to echo that, April. I'm not going to be.
Yeah. Well, just speak up if you got anything to follow up on. Our next item is capital improvement plan, CIP model. I think Amy Davenport, you guys are going to present that tonight? Linwood, can you, can you hear okay? Can you hear and see and everything that you're supposed to see?
I am now seeing everything, but I would recommend, to my preference, if someone is going to talk, please talk into the mic so I can't hear them, please.
Okay.
You will bear with me just a moment while I have technical issues worked out. I think I need one more USB port. Well, while he's passing out materials, we'll go ahead and get started. So good evening, Mayor, good evening Commissioners. What we're here to talk about tonight is the capital improvement plan, five-year financial model. The last time we talked about this was at your budget work session in February.
Thank you.
And coming out of that conversation, we left there with some requests from the board and that was to make a few adjustments to some of the timing of the projects that we had outlined, as well as coming back with some potentially smaller buildings and getting some updated cost estimates for those. So the model you'll see tonight reflects that. We've also, as a staff, spent some time, we literally had butcher paper on that wall right there and really plotted out what it would look like, design, construction, how all these different pieces fit together. And so this new model reflects that as well. So we have with us tonight Ted Cole from Davenport, our financial advisors, with an updated five-year model. He has handed out to you the packet of information, we'll have that here on the screen, and I believe you also gave them the dashboard, the little one-page dashboard, a little bit more graphical representation, same information, just a different way of looking at it. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Ted to walk y'all through. Oh, let's also talk quickly about the things, what we hope to get out of our conversation tonight. And that is, we want to see if this financial model meets the interests of the board, particularly for that first year, first two years really, because we have to start planning year two and year one. We want to get some feedback just generally on how you feel about the tax rate impact of these projects. And then also some feedback on debt policies. Hopefully on an upcoming agenda, we'd like to adopt some new policies for the town in terms of debt issuance. And Ted will talk a little bit more about that as he goes through his presentation, but keep those in mind as we go through.
The document that Ted gave out, is that part of the packet or is that something that I'll be able to get a view of later?
You should be able to see it on screen. I apologize. Forgot you were going to be remote, so. But we'll send that to you afterwards.
Yeah, okay, cool, babe.
Yep, that can be emailed and we do, we do have a hard copy at your seat for you, so that can get sent along, I guess. Well, good evening, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Amy said, this is a follow-on to the retreat presentation. The first 10 or so pages are really identical to what we presented back in February and I will go through them, but I might go through them a little bit faster than we did at the retreat. There are page numbers in the bottom right corner. Okay, all right, we are ready. Table of contents, page two, just so you know what is in here, I'm going to start with the appendix, the detail of all your existing debt. So if you would like to look at the details, loan by loan, debt by debt, it's all in there. We have some projections for the tax base growth, which will play into your ability to fund the capital projects and there's detail in the appendix on that. Greater level of detail related to the Town Center project, cost estimates, and then your existing financial policies. As Amy said, one of the things we would like to do as part of this process, not necessarily this evening, but going forward, is to consider some additional policies that could be added to your existing policy document, and these would be specific to debt. And we, we didn't want to do those in a vacuum a year ago, for example, and find ourselves all of a sudden in a situation where we're trying to do certain things and the policies are holding us back unnecessarily. So we really felt like it was important to talk about policies for debt while we're talking about what I would call a refined capital program, now that we've gone through this a few times, last summer, this retreat, in February, and then again tonight. So we're really going to cover the front part, tax base, your existing debt, and then we're going to get into the meat of the discussion, which is the projects and how you fund them. So, page four, graphically what you can see, this is your tax base as a town, going back to 2015. We have highlighted where you have revaluations and the most recent being the gold bar there, fiscal 25, the budget you all are working on, a significant step up in the tax base. And then with input from planning and other town staff, we've made some projections about what the tax base might do based on building permit activity, lots, all sorts of different planning metrics that help us guide what the tax base growth could be. And you can see in the table below what the total assessed value has been from 2015 to 2025. We've gone from about 680 million of tax base to 2.5 billion with the last revale that was done. And obviously this budget, you are dealing with that large revaluation and what you're going to do with the tax rate and a number of other things. You can see some metrics on the right-hand side, how you've grown year over year, how you've grown with and without these revale years included. But the long and short of it, feel, feel good about the projections we're using for the tax base, but we are also acknowledging that if things were to slow down, right, the projects that you might want to do will have a greater impact, because one of the ways we're measuring the impact of these projects is how many pennies on the tax rate does it take to raise the revenue to make the payments? And if the value of a penny is not growing as quickly, it will take more pennies, all things being equal. So the, the growth assumptions are important. We think we've got a good methodology, but we've also, when we get there, we've shown you a sensitivity, which is what happens if that growth does slow down? Just so you have a sense of the effect of that. That's a very important part of this whole analysis, is you're a high-growth community, you're starting at a relatively small size and growing larger, and that value of the penny, one penny on your tax rate, really drives quite a bit of revenue for you going forward. Little more detail on that on page five, you can see the projections. I would focus on the real estate piece, columns C and D, and you can see we've got historical data through 2025, and then we've got the projections. In the first five years of projections, when you go down columns C and D, fiscal years 26 through 31, you can see over that period of time, based on the data from permitting and other input from developers and builders, over that period of time, we might see a tax base that goes from 2.5, 2.3 billion up to 3.9 billion. So another significant five-year period. And then we've reverted to a 2.5% per year growth rate as we get out beyond 2031. So that is the basis upon which the growth is, is being calculated, which will be more relevant to you when we get to the latter pages. Okay? And please stop me if you have any questions or would like an additional explanation. So existing debt, this is debt that you've already committed to, page seven. Outstanding at the end of fiscal 24, you'll have about 6.9 million dollars of debt outstanding. You can see in the table or in the graph, each bar represents a fiscal year, that's your principal and interest payment in any given year. In the year you're now budgeting for, the total payments are a little over $900,000. You can see it stepping down gradually and then you have some big drops out in fiscal year 29 and again in fiscal year 32. So you can see it graphically in the upper left, but then on the table on the right, you can see by year, and we know these numbers to the penny, principal payments, interest payments, total payments in any given year for all of the debt together. That's made up of several loans. And you can see you're, you're paying back right around $700,000 a year of principal. Remember, there's 6.9 outstanding. That far right column is a debt ratio we look at, it's a policy that you might consider going forward. It's called the 10-year payout ratio and it's measuring in the forward-looking 10-year period, according to that schedule, how much of that 6.9 million of principal will be repaid 10 years from now? And you're sitting at about 71%. So 10 years from now, 71% of that debt outstanding will have been repaid. Higher is better. It means you're amortizing your debt more quickly, you're not backloading your debt. And you'll see when we go to page eight, we have three potential policies that you all might want to consider going forward. And on the far left is that 10-year payout ratio. Those green bars is your 70% and it's getting stronger over time. The red is the range of a potential policy. And for this ratio, we want to establish a minimum, because higher is better, we want to be higher. So we want to establish a minimum that we don't want to drop below, somewhere between 50 and 65%. That's kind of the range that we would see as a policy. So maybe you go and say, look, we don't want to drop below 50, because if you think about it, the way to make a project or a piece of debt or a mortgage more affordable is you stretch it out, right? But when you do that, you're paying back principal more slowly. And this keeps you from doing that excessively, in that you say, look, I want to be able to demonstrate at any period in time, in the next 10 years, we're going to repay, let's say 50% of our principal. So that would be a policy that we would recommend going forward. And you're going to see, when we fund the CIP, what, what's the impact on these ratios? So you'll understand maybe the relevance of these policy ranges. The middle one is debt to assessed value. So debt outstanding as a percent of your tax base, generally speaking, lower is better. So with, when we talk about a policy, we're establishing an upper level, not to exceed, if you will, and a range might be somewhere between 2 and 3% not to exceed, not to go above. And then debt service to expenditures on the far right, that is, how much of your annual budget is going towards debt service payments in any given year? Lower is better. And we've got a range calcul, a range shown there that it might be on the upper end, somewhere between 15 to 20%. So these are, these are three very commonly used, oftentimes incorporated into financial policies that give you some additional guardrails on capital planning, debt issuance, and making decisions about funding capital projects. Okay. So now we're going to talk about, well, I do have one takeaway. You all, like many North Carolina communities, have ample debt capacity. What I mean by that is in any of these measures, it is a reasonable conversation to have that you might want to issue debt for capital projects. Your, your debt profile, you've not overused debt historically, you're, you have a low level of debt, so there's capacity. And what we're going to focus on is affordability, because capacity does not always mean it's affordable, right? Just because it might, you hear people say, on paper, I can qualify for this loan, but it doesn't mean my income and my lifestyle will support it. So the capacity issue is largely taken care of. You have debt capacity. This, this is all a very reasonable conversation. And what we really want to focus on is affordable, affordability. How do we fund this? What's the impact on our budget? What years? How kind, what kind of revenue do we need to raise to be able to sustain a capital program like this? And, and it is not at all uncommon for high-growth communities, which you all are certainly, a pay-as-you-go, cash-funded method of paying for capital is, is, is tough to do. It's tough to keep up with capital needs if you're only paying cash. So it, it is not uncommon that high-growth communities might have higher debt levels, but still be very highly rated because they have a very strong, vibrant, growing economy. So we're going to see all of these ratios go higher, but that in and of itself is not a negative, in our opinion, to your credit profile. The question is, how can we manage our budgets to make sure that we're paying for those on a, on a real-time, current-year basis?
I guess, I guess it's ideal to keep them within that red band.
Yes, sir. Yes. Ideal to keep them within that band, but it is also your policy and your successor's policy. And one of the things you'll see when we get there is in a couple of the scenarios, we might fall out of the band for a few years. And one of the approaches we take with writing policies is we establish real policies and they're relevant. You know, we're not just setting it at some level that you'll never achieve, right? That, that is not, it's not a relevant policy. We set it at a level that's relevant, but we also give you the flexibility or future boards to make an exception if you need to. Rather than just say, hey, let's amend the policy and take care of this problem, we, we're willing to make an exception because we believe we can get back into compliance in a two- or three-year period. So it gives you some flexibility to manage this policy a little bit. And I think that's important because you want to be sure that you have that flexibility. Just because you might be out of compliance with a policy... Just because you might be out of compliance with a policy for one or two or three years doesn't mean it's not a good project. And so most of the policies that we would recommend adopting would provide some language that you're able to make some exceptions. So when we talk about affordability, you all have done a great job over the years of starting to identify some very specific revenue sources that can be dedicated to a capital plan, right? And so in this, we're largely just talking about capital, not operating, right? Not your salaries and your utilities and all of those things. This is the capital side. And there are a number of existing revenues that have been identified. You can look back at the budgets and you can see these. Some of them are annually reoccurring, and some of them are dollars that you've accumulated over time. You've not spent it. You set them aside, and they'll be eligible to support the capital plan going forward. So it's a combination of dollars that you're collecting each year from property tax, sales tax, park impact fees, street fees, those sorts of things where you're collecting dollars every year, but in some years, you've not spent what you've collected. You save them, and so we have a little bit of savings there that we can also leverage. Those are the top three or four. And then the bottom is some one-time reserves or revenues that you could consider contributing. One is some ARPA funding, $819,000. That's in hand and available. And then the very bottom bullet references fund balance that is above your current policy. So you've got a policy to maintain a certain level of fund balance. And right now, you've got about $2 million in excess of that policy that you could consider. You have the discretion to contribute that to the capital plan. So the top half is really ongoing annual revenue, and those last two items, I would characterize those as really sort of one-time dollars that you could choose to contribute. And we've used all of these in our model, exactly what we've been talking about when we last met in February, no changes. Page 10, you'll have to look at your book. This is where we take your existing debt and these revenues, and we start to marry them up, and we look on a year-by-year basis and say, do we have more money coming in than going out for this capital plan? And right now, this is just your existing debt. We don't have any new debt in here yet. And the key takeaway is column O, and you can see there are surpluses every year. And what that's telling us is for the debt you have on the books already, that's 6.9 million, right? And all the revenue sources that have been identified on page nine, you've got excess dollars available in every year, which will start to help fund the capital plan. You're going to need more than that, but you've got a running start at it. And that's been, again, that's a very positive place to be in, obviously, rather than not having any excess dollars. Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. For the value of the penny now, had been $240,000, is that an increase or a decrease from last year's?
The value of a penny is up. Each penny is generating more dollars because you have a larger tax base. We're not making yet any assumptions about what you do with the tax rate. But each penny is generating $240,000, whereas last year it was $150-ish. So again, not saying what the tax rate will do in 2025. That's coming. But the value of a penny, no matter how many you charge or levy, is up.
So just to expand, I think, make sure I'm clear on what Dan is asking. The value of the penny don't change no matter what we do.
Correct. No matter what you do with the tax rate, the value of the penny is 240.
Right.
Within that year.
That's right.
That's right.
It's a fixed number.
Correct. Based on the revaluation and what has come down from the Wake County assessor. And they back into that, and that takes into account real property, personal property, vehicles, all of the different things that are taxed. And you get updates regularly, right? And this is the current number. But whatever you might do with your tax rate in the '25 budget will not change the fact that one penny generates 240. That's a constant.
Ted, on your one pager, we show the projects would have an impact of a little over 7 cents. And we got 240 apiece. So do you know if we were to implement a 7-cent increase, what impact that would have on our theoretical average homeowner?
We can back into that. And I don't know what the average house value will be or is.
Just the impact on the property taxes?
Yeah.
By a 7-cent increase?
It was $54 or $56 for the average homeowner per penny. I can't remember which. So we'll go with $56, right? So $56 generated as cost per penny. So that's 392, just under $400.
Okay. Thank you.
Annually.
Right.
So we've gotten to page 12, right? Push me along. So that's, we've got, as Amy said at the very beginning, we have, or your staff has reworked all of those projects under column A. And primarily, looking at the year that they are expected to be started, what we're calling the year funded. Think of it this way, you want to build a building, you design it, and you go and you bid the project for construction. That's when you need the money, is when you award the contract to the contractor, and that's when we borrow the money. So the year funded is right when you start construction. So you might be a year of design, right, or engineering to get something going. So the fiscal years are when we would propose to borrow the money and start the construction, and then you've got the amounts. And as Amy said, those have been reworked for some smaller facilities. Maybe I think the prioritizations have moved around a little bit and taking into account sort of the operationally, how do you bring these on one behind the other in a smart and manageable way? And I think that influenced the prioritization and the timing. But all in, for all of these projects, you've got, it's a grand total of 94.9 million. You'll see that in the green bar, line 20, 94.9 million. We've broken these into two groups. Those that would be funded between fiscal years '25 and '28, that's about 69 million. And those that would be funded in '29 to '32 is be 25 million. But all in, the total program, which would go out to 2032, so just under a decade, about $95 million worth of projects. We have some pay-as-you-go funding. That would be cash funding of a, call it 6 million, a little bit of grant, but largely and heavily relying on issuing debt to the tune of what could be about $88 million of debt. Remember, you're sitting at about $6.9 million of debt outstanding. Obviously, this would not all be issued at one time. It literally would be issued year by year when each project or group of projects is ready. And so you're easing into it, if you will. And we've used a very basic assumption for the debt 20-year term at a 5% interest rate. This is the type of planning that the local government commission in Raleigh, who will ultimately have to approve any debt you issue, would look at that and say, look, that's good planning. You're not stretching the debt out 30 or 40 years. You're not using a below-market interest rate. So it's good, solid planning. And as we alluded to earlier, in that green box called the base case, what we've done is we've taken the assessed value that we talked about at the very beginning of the book, right? What kind of growth in the tax base, which is going to mean the penny's going from generating $240,000 to higher numbers, right? We're not talking yet about how many pennies. But the growth in the penny for fiscal years '26 through '31 is about 9% per year. Beyond that, we've gone back to a low, call it, planning rate of 2.5%. Those three ratios all get really close to the level of the possible policy, particularly that 10-year payout. That dips a little bit below 50% for a couple of years. I'm on line 29. That's the one that you want it higher, and 50 would be kind of a typical low-end policy. You get a little below that for a couple of years, but again, I think it's the kind of thing we could manage to be above 50 slightly, or you could make an exception. I don't think it's a reason to say this doesn't work. Debt to assessed value stays below 2%. And debt service to expenditure is in that 19% to 20%. So it's getting on the higher end. In order to afford this, remember I said you have all of these revenue sources, right? Several revenue sources. And right now, they're more than you need for the debt you have. You've got some surpluses. So we're using all of those surpluses, and we're saying, in addition to that, you would need to bring in for that first batch of projects, the ones that would be funded between '25 and '28, you would need to bring in a little over 7 pennies worth of revenue. Okay? So that's where we're now correlating the affordability of this plan to how much revenue do you need and how many pennies does it take to generate that revenue? And at the current levy of, excuse me, the current value of $240,000 per penny, and the assumption that that will grow, for that first batch of projects, we need a little over 7 pennies. And then for the second batch of projects, which would be funded between fiscal year '29 and '32, it would be an additional, call it, 4.4 pennies. So the whole program together would be about 11.5 pennies. But we have purposely set this up to where the pennies needed coincide with the revaluations, '25 and '29. That was by design. So that gets to the affordability. Is this affordable? And that's kind of subjective, right? I mean, some people would say, hey, 7 pennies, look at everything we're getting. And others would say, that's a lot, and everybody in between. So that's a little more of a subjective thing. The capacity is there. I think this is all very doable. I think it would be met by the local government commission very favorably. I don't think they would say you're getting too far ahead of yourselves. We could go and access this kind of money if we needed to over time because, again, it's not all being done at once. And the biggest question is, are you comfortable with raising this level of revenue to support it? The red is what I alluded to earlier, which is what if things don't happen here as quickly? What if the tax base isn't growing as quickly? We essentially cut it in half, so that would represent some meaningful slowdown in development. And you'll see there is a corresponding increase in the impact, right? So what had been 7 pennies is about 9.6 pennies. It takes more pennies to raise the same revenue because the penny isn't generating as much revenue as the base case. So it's pretty simple concepts. And then the second one is, I'm going to, 5.8 pennies. So it just gives you a little bit of an idea of what would happen if there were a slowdown. And keep in mind, I mean, this might be a plan that you all could get comfortable to adopt and move forward with, but you will have, in any given year, opportunities to slow things down or accelerate projects. I mean, you'll be moving in this direction, but you'll have plenty of opportunities or your successors to say, hey, growth is better, growth isn't as good, maybe we need to relook at a project, a priority or an amount. But this would set you on the track to starting to afford a pretty healthy list of projects, almost $100 million worth of projects.
Question for you, sir. With the $2 million that's in excess, because I heard you say that we can use debt to fund these projects, but with the $2 million in excess, is it possible to use some of the smaller numbers to?
Are we talking about the $2 million that's set aside from the ARPA funds or the fund balance?
The fund balance.
Yes. You could choose to use that to pay for a project and not use it and not fund the project with debt. What we're doing is we're setting that $2 million aside and using it to...
Leverage.
That's right. Yes, sir. So again, it's a combination of annual dollars from tax base, excuse me, from your tax collections, your sales tax, parks and street fees, and then some one-time dollars.
So Dan always asks questions I have to follow up on. Makes you understand. So your model here has no cash. Is that fair to say?
We are funding some projects with cash. Some of them are not funded with debt, and it's about 5.7 million is cash-funded. But the $2 million in the ARPA funds, that's $2 million is the amount of money in excess of your fund balance? And the ARPA is about $800,000. We're using that not necessarily to fund projects, but to help pay for debt payments.
I think most, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of the cash pay-as-you-go is actually coming out of those dedicated impact fee revenues, not general fund.
Ongoing revenues.
Yeah. It's more of the streets projects, for example, are funded primarily as pay-as-you-go.
So you've got three formulas here. Where does debt service fit as a percentage of operating budget?
This would put you, line 31, that would, if this was exactly how we played it out... Oh, thank you.
One follow-up question to Dan, got us talking. The 2.5, well, I think it's 3, but it's being reduced because of the valuation to like 2.4 pennies that we collect now, CIP pennies. Is that used in these projects? So is this value plus that value is what we need? Is that right?
Yes, sir. This model includes that capital savings that we've been accumulating over several years to use that money now, we're ready, to use that for some capital projects. So this model maxes out all available revenues that we have identified for capital projects.
So going forth, the year after this is approved, then we won't be putting any additional money except for capital. It'll fall into this full-year plan that we need to change.
That's right. The money would still be dedicated towards capital, but it may be paying a debt service now instead of going into a savings.
Right. And I see the number you're referencing. Yes, you are correct. You are currently using about 2.4 pennies worth of revenue in your, that's funding you're already committing. This would be, that 7 pennies would be on top of that, an additional. Page 14, this is where we circled back and said, okay, we talked about your existing debt ratios, some potential policies, and you were well below or well in compliance of all of them, right? And that's where I said you've got plenty of capacity. We're issuing a fair amount of debt over the next eight years in this scenario. And all of these ratios come much closer to the policy levels that we've talked about. They're all still in that range, right? But they're sort of getting to the top end of the debt profile for the town, and you can see when they start to go back down, right? The last project that we fund is around 2032, and that's kind of where some of these hit their peak, and then they start to go back down. And that's going to be the next five or 10-year CIP that somebody's going to be planning for, sitting up there, right? So as I said, the red areas are policy ranges that we believe are relevant and meaningful, but with the exception of one or two years in that upper left, you're in the range of all of those. So it is certainly changing your debt profile, right? You have a much larger debt profile than you do today, but this is all happening because you're continuing to grow. And these are high but reasonable for a high-growth community.
So you would describe the red line as normal, typical?
Typical for a policy level. Yes. Yes, sir. And I say that from two ways. Looking at a lot of other local governments that we work with and... two ways. Looking at a lot of other local governments that we work with and looking at the data that the rating agencies publish on these matters, debt. So you all don't have a bond ratings. You've never needed one. Going forward of this magnitude, that's probably in your future at some point. And those policy ranges match up generally to what the rating agencies would look at when they look at a local government and say, you know, that's, that's a reasonable level of debt. It's not over-leveraged or excessive. So it, it, it is informed by rating agency data and, and commentary, but also what we see across the state for other local governments. The dashboard, the one-pager is just another depiction of page 12, really. Right, Amy? That was the-
Yes, sir. It is, it is, it's, it's page 12 and a little more easily consumable graphic, so that you can see year by year which projects are considered for construction under this model. As we talked about, you know, a CIP, it is just a plan. Really, all you're committing to when you adopt a budget is the first year of that plan. And what many communities do and what we intend to do is revisit that plan every year. We take a look at, how did the tax-based growth come in, you know, a year from now? What are we projecting for tax-based growth? Was it higher? Was it lower than what we thought? How the affordability, how's it affecting things? Where are we in terms of planning for these projects? And then we make adjustments each year to this plan as we move forward.
Thanks, Amy.
So you've got the fiscal years across the top, projects, and then in the middle there, the corresponding tax impact that I, I mentioned, one in 2025 and one in 2029. And then the policies down below where we've got one year where we are slightly out of compliance with that 10-year payout ratio, but otherwise, everything's green there, which is in compliance. There are slides in this book. You have many options that you'll, you'll discuss about how to issue debt, the process of going through the local government commission. They will approve most every piece of debt that a local government does. Bank financing's actually going to the bond market, possibly establishing a bond rating. All of those things will evolve as you go forward, depending on the size of the debt issuance, which is driven by the size of the project and the interest rate environment that we're in at that time. We're using 5%. Today, for a 20-year loan, you're going to be under 4%. So we've got some cushion built into that number. And as Amy said, you're going to look at this each year, not only look at how your revenues and what growth tax-based performance has been, but also getting better ideas about the costs of these projects. You know, all of these projects can be done with debt that does not have to be voted. You don't have to go to a referendum to do this, these projects. Very common that what we call installment purchase contracts or limited obligation bonds, those are debt instruments that are very commonly used. You all have used them before. Many local governments do. And all of these projects could be funded through that type of debt. There's obviously a process you have to go through to do that. There's a public hearing. There's resolutions. As I mentioned earlier, you have to go through the local government commission, but all of that's very doable. But you, you, you take each project one at a time, and you fund a project or two when they're ready to be built. That's really what drives the debt issuance schedule, because the local government doesn't want you to say, hey, I think we might need $20 million in the next couple of years. Let's just get that and start spending. They want to see, what are you building? What's the cost? And so they and you are approving each debt issuance as the project is coming together and ready to be constructed. So there are several places along the way where people have an opportunity to look at approving projects and certainly approving the funding.
Proving it inside phases, pretty much.
That's really, I mean, there are some other slides here. I think I've covered them. It's just different types of debt. I, I think the, the real meat of this is on page 12. That's the first decision to be made. And then, as I said, there are, you'll have a number of options on how to actually implement the plan when the time comes. Which one? Unless there's a slide you'd like me to hit on again. Yeah. Just, yeah, just, these are all just different concepts about, you know, how to issue debt, different types of debt, a schedule for a bond referendum, if that were something that you wanted to discuss going forward. And then in the appendix are, are details of all of these cases. If you're wanting to, you know, tie out to every single scenario, it's all in there. But, but again, page 12 is really the key takeaway slide, I think.
Do you, do you provide recommendations on any of those options, funding options?
We do. And it, it will be driven by, what are we funding? What's the asset or the building? What, what amount is it? And over what period of time do we want to repay the debt, right? And so bank financing, very commonly used, whether you're borrowing 500,000 or $30 million. We've done the whole gamut going to banks. Happens to be, right now, banks are, are less competitive. They're still lending, but they're less competitive than what you might get in the bond market. And so we'll, with every time a client says, hey, we're ready to do a project, we're ready to borrow money, or we're, we're going to be ready in six months, that's when we start to assess, right? Well, what are we funding? How much is it? What's the term of the debt? Is it five years? Is it 20 years? And providing those recommendations each time, because that, the relationships do change. And, you know, if it happens to be a small borrowing amount over a shorter payback, a bank can be a very cost-effective means to raise money. Whereas when you get into larger amounts with longer-term payback, you want to make sure you're looking at a few different options.
Yeah. One of the Wake County towns was really planning to do a bond this fall, but with the revaluation, they're taking it off the table, I think. Does that make sense?
Yes. A referent, a vote? Right. Yeah, there's, there were a number last fall. There's a few that are gearing up to do them again this coming November. And, and for different reasons, people have said, look, we might, you know, we might want to wait a year or two and see what the revale does and understand. That's, that's usually for a referendum. But again-
So you can do a bond without a referendum?
You can. It's not, it's not a general obligation bond. If you go to the voters, you're asking them to approve what's called a general obligation bond. And if you issue that bond, you are required by law to raise taxes if you need, if you don't have money to pay for it, right? That's, that is the ultimate lending mechanism that any local government has, but it's voter-approved. We issue other bonds. They're called limited obligation bonds, right? So what I just talked about was a general obligation, GO. You know, county votes those all the time, schools and whatnot. A limited obligation is not backed by taxes. It's backed by an appropriation of you all in the budget, and it's secured by a building. It's a mortgage. So it is a very commonly-used type of debt. It's not, it doesn't go to referendum. You have to hold a public hearing. You have to adopt two resolutions. You still have to go to the local government commission. But ultimately, the, the lender on that is basically taking a mortgage on a facility. So if you or a subsequent board said, we don't want to pay that payment anymore, you would lose access to the building that is securing the loan. Now, that has never happened. Local government commission, among other things, that's not how local governments in North Carolina operate. So it is viewed as a very safe loan in North Carolina. But that is the distinct difference. It doesn't have to be voted, and it's not secured by your taxing authority, but it is secured by an asset. And you're required to put the payment in your budget. And if you don't want to pay it, you're required to remove it. So there's sort of an action that has to take place to take that payment out of the budget. And for all of those reasons, lenders and investors look at those limited obligation bonds. It's still a bond, but they look at them as a very safe investment or, or loan.
So in your opinion, looking at the numbers you put together for us, would the limited obligation bond be an option?
Absolutely.
So we wouldn't have to go to a ref-
You would not have to go to a referendum.
It's sort of affordability, the term you use, right? If you can afford a bond and you're not going to raise taxes to pay the bond off, you can pretty much-
Right. Yeah. And, and, and the, the 5% interest rate that we used, with a limited obligation bond, you would be, as I said, below 4%. So absolutely, if you all are comfortable with this plan, you feel good about the projects, the, you're, you're willing to do what you need to do to bring that new revenue into the capital plan, the limited obligation route is very viable for all of this, if that's how you want to go about it.
And could we do that, say, for example, we've got four projects in fiscal '26?
Right.
About 47 million, give or take. So we could do a single limited obligation bond for all four projects?
What you have to ensure to do that is that the bidding for the construction is lined up. Because again, the local government commission wants to know, if you want 47, do you have the 47 million accounted for in bids? If it's one project, it's one bid. If it's three, they got to line up. And we certainly have clients that can do that and others that said, look, I got to get this first one done, and I'm going to come back in 12 months and do the next one. That's just because there was something that precluded them from getting them on the same schedule. But it could be all done as one issuance if they all line up in that regard. So, you know, so that means architectural and engineering stuff all have to keep on pace with one another. And that can be difficult, obviously.
Thank you, sir. That's great.
Hey, Glenn Wood. You're there, Glenn. I see you up there. You've been kind of quiet. Any, any thoughts, questions, follow-up, anything?
Yeah, I do. But I think my, my biggest question would be, you know, are we, from a town perspective, healthy as you've seen in your position? And, you know, if there was a gap that you think that we could attack quickly, what would it be from a financial perspective, I would say?
You know, from a, and again, I would make the distinction here. This is all capital, right? So there is obviously a lot that goes on in your operating budget that we have not analyzed at the same level. When we look at your audits, you've got good reserves. You're growing your reserves. Your, your budget is structurally balanced, meaning current year revenues are paying for current year expenditures. But I certainly understand in talking with Amy, there are pressures on the operating budget. As you're growing, more staff, more space. So when I would answer your question, I would say on the capital side, with the debt and the, the capital plan that you have, I think it's a very solid and sound planning process. You all have been very deliberate in this. I mean, we've presented to your, you and your counterparts for a number of years in a row. I mean, this is something that has been developed over a number of years with a lot of thought. And I think it's a very sound process. And I think this is a very doable plan. And I'm not minimizing the fact that it might require somebody to make a decision about seven new pennies. I mean, I understand that that is not a small thing. But if you're able to, to want to approve the projects and get the funding in place, I think this is a very sound plan. And this is all capital. You know, are there places within the operating budget? We're just not as versed in all of the nuances of your operating budget. But, but what we look at, when we look at audits, every, you know, you're very well-managed operation, but we don't know all the ins and outs of, you know, elements of the operating budget.
Did that answer your question?
Thank you. I appreciate it. It does. Thank you. I really, really appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions from board? I, I have tried to research this, and I haven't been successful understanding it still. Can you explain, can you explain just what CMAR is and how that affects these projects?
So when you, let's take a project, right? You've got a police station. And you've got to procure construction services. You have a number, local governments have a number of options to consider to procure construction services. And CMAR stands for Construction Manager at Risk. And that is a procurement process. And this is not my discipline, but we're around projects enough. So you jump in here, Eric. You have a number of ways you could procure construction. And I think of maybe the traditional way being something that's referred to often as design, bid, build. You hire an architect. They design your building down to construction-level drawings. And then that goes out to the construction community, and you receive bids from contractors on a day and time specific. And you award that contract for the new building to the lowest responsible bidder. And it's a, that's the process. And I think that's kind of what I, I refer to as the traditional way of doing it. We have seen, and I don't know how long CMAR has been available, Construction Manager at Risk, but in layman's terms, what you're doing there is you want to build that same police station, but you're going to hire or select your contractor upfront. This is who we're going to work with, XYZ contractor, and maybe the architect, too. And we're going to collectively, collaboratively, move this police station through design and get to a place where XYZ contractor gives us a firm bid. It's called a guaranteed maximum price. This is what we will charge you to build that police station. And when you hire that contractor upfront, you're negotiating certain things about their services, costs, timing. I don't know all the ins and outs and nuances of that. But, but the long and short of it is you're selecting the team upfront, and you are entering into an agreement with them. And you're ultimately getting to a place where you're, they're going to deliver to you a guaranteed maximum price for this facility. And is that a better process than the first one I described? It's different, clearly. But I'm not sure one's better than the other. And I suspect it has something to do with being able to select the contractor upfront, probably a merit to that. And then I, I would imagine people would tell you, depending on the construction environment, and, you know, one of those methods might create a better outcome than the other, but I'm not sure you ever know that for certain. So there's probably a lot of reasons, all of them valid, and, and not all of them financial, why you might choose to do Construction Manager at Risk versus that design, bid, build. That's kind of the extent of what I know on that. And I know there's a lot more to it that a contractor could explain as to why one works better than the other in certain situations. But we see all, both of those being used on a regular basis. Construction Manager at Risk has become a much more common method of procuring construction than I remember 10 years ago. And, and maybe that's because some of the, the laws have changed, or the statutes have changed, or people have just come to understand it and get more comfortable with it.
Yeah. I noticed over the several years you've been doing this, I don't know how many, five, four, five years. We've been working this a long time. Sometimes you add that into the price estimate, and sometimes you don't. And I think these numbers, there's nothing baked in there for CMAR. So is there a reason that it's not part of the numbers, I guess?
Well, I don't know. I mean- I mean, these, as I understand it, these project costs are based off of, I don't know, maybe their square footage costs for a type of facility?
So we hired ADW architects to give us some cost estimates. The first round we did of this, we were not including those CMAR costs. But we also realized just recently we were missing some design costs. So not knowing whether we want to do the design, bid, build, or the CMAR approach, when we revised the cost for this model, it includes something that should cover either one of those options.
Okay. So it is covered, then?
It is.
It's just the line item changed?
Yes.
And I apologize, because now I realize you didn't, it's in your book, but you didn't put the numbers together.
Some of this, we put together from scratch, and others, we took the inputs from town. That's right.
That's right. Thank you for that. I think Eric knows a lot about that, too.
Yes. And so you hit the nail on the head with that. The main difference is when you pick your GC, they participate in pre-construction services. And so you typically throw that trust into the bid process. And when they come with their bid, they have the subcontractor to have with it. And then you take them all as is. Where there's a pre-vetting of your subcontractors, all of the, H fact, all those people that contribute to the project. And that is typically where the inconsistencies or the float in a budget happens for a project. And so you pick someone, they miss quote on pipe, da-da-da-da-da. Well, you purchase test all that stuff, and you kind of assemble your team. There's a lot more trust in there. And over time, what we've seen, you've seen the increase of that because you've seen a decrease in capacity internally in a lot of municipalities to have that project manager or those people internally. And so you partner with someone to equivalent of like when you have your transportation, you do your own call list, you vet everybody, and they're just sitting around waiting for you to give them a call to help you build a street. Well, this is somebody assigned directly to a project. And you partner with them throughout the process. The price is typically a little bit higher, but it's more accurate, if that makes sense. And so you'll come in way closer. And there's some skin in the game on the part of the general contractor for their, not just monetarily, but their name as well, to say that there's someone who does provide that service in a way. So, yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think what I was getting at, Eric, because his plan is kind of based on those numbers and the square footage we put in there, whatever square footage. And that's pretty, for the square footage, is pretty solid.
Yes. It's square footage, but it does have some of those extra fees in it. Because what we did was, we, when we came, after we had our budget retreat, and we talked about smaller buildings, one, we're saying smaller buildings, they're not necessarily smaller buildings. It's just the approach of how we want to add on to the building later has changed. And so instead of doing a two-story building and then having a shale second floor that you come back in and you upfit it to fit your growth, you'll be having essentially a two-story building that is half the footprint. And then you add a second story, a first and second story, when you do the addition add-on in the future, if that makes sense. And so that cuts down on your initial cost of the building. And it's, you will see that the add-on will be just as expensive as the first part of the building instead. But it ultimately ends up being cheaper on the front end for us. So it's a different approach. I wanted to clarify that. They're not smaller buildings. They are all based on the ultimate footprint that will be in the initial building. And then the add-on will still reflect the space needs assessment that's want to be performed for both fire and police and town hall, community center, and library, if that makes sense.
And I think our draw ones had those add-ons drawn on.
Yes.
Also, which one of these line items does the Veterans Memorial fall under? Because I don't see it unless it's under, under the site plan phase one, two, or three?
It will be, okay. The Veterans Memorial is associated with, it's connected to the town hall, but it is accounted for in the site plan.
Campus site plan.
The campus site plan, yes. Because it's an external feature to a building. So you don't need to build in the head of Veterans Memorial. But it's positioned in proximity to the future location of the town hall.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Which is, the campus site plan is one of the first things we do?
Yes. And so we're working with ADW. What we want to do is go ahead and take care of the site as a whole and get each building slab-ready. And so that when the time comes, we don't have to run utilities for every building. We want to take care of the site development and the utilities in general for the whole site at the first push. And so now, which helps a lot, because you all have decided on that third option or what have you on the location of each one of those. And then also, keep in mind that there's a library that will be partnering with Wade County that is on the further back end of the campus. And so we kind of have to work our way through the campus to get to the future location of the library as well.
You want to say something, Amy?
No, I was just, I got to help us kind of wrap things up a little bit. There's more questions. Certainly Ted is here, questions about the model. I would encourage you to ask those, if you have those tonight. But do you want to go ahead and point out, we are trying to wrap up our, the manager's proposed budget here in a very short timeframe upcoming. So if you do have feedback on those initial questions that we asked at the beginning, does this reflect your priorities? Are you comfortable with the impacts and the revenue that's needed in order to make this reality? How do you feel about the policies, et cetera? So feedback now, or very soon, reach out to the manager and let him know if you have any strong feelings about redirection here, because that will help put the budget together for this year.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Lenwood, anything from you while Amy's up?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think board, you know, we've been working on this thing a long, long time. Talking about a long time. I know Lenwood and Michael is new. But I would suggest, if you have a lot of questions, is get a one-on-one meeting, one-on-two meeting with Eric and Amy. And, you know, they can very much explain pretty well kind of where we at, how long it's taken to get here, and what we got going. I do want to say to Ted, thank you. You know, I think you delivered the football. So we'll see what the board, you know, decides to do with it. But it's a good, it's a good plan. So thank you for that. You've been working on it a long time, and I really appreciate that. And I think, I think I've heard this for many, many years. And I think looking and working with you over the last three or four years, I think it's more, makes more sense than anything I've ever seen, is this term, "time is money." And, you know, we could have gone these things a lot cheaper two years ago, three years ago. And the longer you wait, the more money it costs. And in this case, time is money on these facilities, really.
Sure.
Because if we, if we wait a few years, it's going to even be more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we'll try to wrap this up. And we've got one more item, which is a noise ordinance, audience by, Dave, I think you want to do that. So this is, this is just a discussion. Maybe some history while we ask you to do this.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a, four quick slides up on the screen. But generally, it's to guide our discussion. A week ago, you received a draft for discussion purposes only revision to our noise ordinance here in the town. And I'm hoping everyone had a, had a chance to take a look at that. And Commissioner Long, I know, I know he has that one in digital version. So he'll, he'll be ready to go on that. This came up, just real quickly. This came up because of some challenges that the town has had over the past year or two with regard to the regulation of unnecessary or excessive noise within the town limits. And that struggle extends beyond the Planning Department and the Police Department, but also to the rest of the staff and our elected officials. These are the sort of complaints that come in that are very important at that very moment. And they're unpredictable as to when they might come. And they require action immediately. These are typically not the most important things that are on the, on the workload of any particular department. And I know the Police Department is focused on this. But it, it has been a challenge in the past to enforce our noise ordinance. And so this is an effort to move in a better direction. So very clearly, every town struggles with noise regulation. The general statutes expressly authorize cities to regulate excessive noise. So there's no question as to whether this is something that towns are charged with accomplishing. Our ordinance has been pretty much unchanged as long as I have been working with you in, that was probably 2003. And from the footnotes, it looks like it may have been unchanged since 1989. In 2019, however, there was an amendment to the ordinance to list blasting activity as a particular activity that would have special hours. But other than that, it pretty much has been untouched. So where do we go from here? What, what could we do? As you saw in my memo, what has, what has happened in many communities over the past 20 years, including communities that I've worked in, was we were going to go the scientific approach. We were going to use decibel meters. And in some cases, hired an audiologist as a consultant and use SPL meters and train police officers so that they would stand at property lines and measure the decibel level of noises that were triggering complaints as excessive. Police departments across the country, and Chief Simmons is not here this evening, but, but on his whole list of ideas, and he and I have talked about ways that the ordinance could be improved, the one thing that he would pass as a message, and I'm sure he left the same thing with Captain Haynes, is whatever you do, please do not place meters that need to be calibrated in the trunks of our patrol vehicles so that we have to train and continuously update these things to measure noise to determine whether that noise constitutes a violation. So there's another way we can go. And so here is how we can go at noise regulation for 2024 and moving later into the 21st century. And I would suggest to everyone, this is the path that communities are starting to go. And fortunately for us, the case law is supporting this when folks do challenge noise ordinances on various legal bases. So the updated ordinance that is in your package has been updated to be more current, more content neutral, so as not to trigger a violation of the North Carolina or U.S. constitutions, particularly the First Amendment. We can regulate noise, but we can't regulate the content of noise. We prefer jazz to rock kind of thing. That, that's a, that's a no-no. It's, the new ordinance is more organized and more detailed. It has a definitions section. And hopefully, even if this board, or even if I didn't get it right this time, amendments as we go forward, as we grow, as activity changes, as noise levels change, would allow this document to be more organic so it doesn't stay the same for another 35 years. So here's the, here's the important thing that changes this from where we are today to a new standard for determining whether a noise is subject to regulation. And the standard is not 50 decibels at the property line when held at the waist and on a sea-level curve on the meter. Instead, it is a reasonable person standard. When Commissioner Paul and I were in law school in our first year, we were confronted with this term in our, in our 1L classes, in our torts class. And it is a legal fiction. This concept of a reasonable person is a made-up dude or woman. It was, it was a reasonable man when we were in law school. But now it's a reasonable person. And this is a person of ordinary intellect, reasonably educated, and of ordinary sensitivities with regard to things that one can hear. And would that person think that this noise is excessive, unnecessary, raucous, offensive? That's how you build a standard that a courtroom could assess. Because a series of jurors could hear that and could understand that we have a general member of society in the hypothetical who would assess whether this is completely out of bounds. So that's the way this ordinance is now drafted. Most importantly, it is not drafted to the reasonable police officer standard. It is not drafted to the reasonable lady who really likes to sit on her deck in the backyard and listen to birds standard. It is overall reasonable person, and it isn't targeted to anyone in particular. And that is a, that's a significant change. Let me, let me use this slide to trigger some discussion. There was some discussion during our capital plan, but there wasn't nearly enough. We need much more for, for this one. And let me, let me do this. Because this isn't a Zoom call where I can share a screen, I also need to look at the ordinance itself in order to walk us through this. I don't have a second one. So given it's a work session, we'll, we've used the technology for all it can be used for. The first thing that we really need to talk about is time. Different levels of noise are generally reasonable at different hours of the day. You expect a certain level of noise in a society at noon that is not as appropriate at midnight. I assume everybody's on board with that concept. And, and so would our theoretical reasonable person. So let me, let me open this up to our definitions section. And actually, let's, let's talk about the general idea of what is an unreasonable noise. And I'm going to read it for the benefit of anyone unfortunate enough to be watching at this hour. Unreasonable noise is the unreasonable making of or knowingly and unreasonably permitting to be made any sound that is an unreasonably loud, boisterous, or unusual noise disturbance, commotion, or vibration due to base levels or other sources from any dwelling, building, or other structure, or privately owned outdoor property, or upon any public street, park, or other place or building. Any sound that is ordinary and normal to the operation of these places when conducted in accordance with the usual standards or practice, including standards for noise mitigation, and in a manner that will not unreasonably interfere with the peace and comfort of neighbors, or their guests, or operators, or customers in places of business, or detrimentally or adversely affect such residences or places of business, shall not be enforced as an unreasonable noise. Now, that is as circular as the law could ever be. We first tell you what it is, and then we carve out all the things that it is not. We are looking for things with our noise regulation that are out of bounds. Okay? It's not that there is a noise. It's that that noise is not appropriate in a civilized society, at least at these hours or under these circumstances. So let's take a look here at, you've seen the general prohibition, which is any plainly audible unreasonable noise is to be determined by a reasonable person. And that's really the rule. But more importantly in the ordinance are, where are the hours? Up, 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 up. In our definitions, we have, we have, we have things that are expressly okay. So we don't have to apply the reasonable person standard for everything. It's only for those things that are completely out of bounds. So we have two other sections. Things are just okay. Construction activity at 11 o'clock in the morning, it's okay. Doesn't matter that it's loud. It doesn't matter that you don't like it. It's just not something upon which the Police Department is going to act. The sound of your car driving down the street, it's just okay. The sound of your car driving down the street, it's just okay. So long as it has the appropriate muffler, so it'd be appropriate and has the sound mitigation attached to it. So there are certain things where we won't have to go through and find the reasonable person. For those, we really need these hours. Daytime hours and nighttime hours that you see here in highlight at 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the day are the hours that we currently have in our ordinance. And I'm informed that we do get complaints before 11:00 p.m. quite a bit. That is beyond the scope of the education that I was provided in school. So this is entirely with the town board. What will we decide? Are those sort of noises okay times? That's daytime. And hey, let's quiet it down nighttime.
I think he's asking for y'all's input.
Oh, I'd love to hear the mayor, too. It's just a work session.
Right now?
Yeah. Throw it out there. Or it can be fine.
So where did the 7:11 come in? I mean, I know that's for service stations and stuff, but...
It's what we have. It's what we have. It's also what Raleigh has.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm passing along to you that 11 o'clock seems to offend a certain segment of the Roseville population.
I think a lot of our complaints is between those hours.
Yeah.
7:11.
Yeah.
Are there more at 7:00 a.m.? Are there more at 11:00?
Should we go to 8:00 to 10:00 is really what I'm asking the board.
I don't know if that would help. I mean, we get complaints at 7:00 in afternoon, 5:30 in afternoon.
Okay.
And then another thought is, do we make it an hour later on the weekends? You know, 8:00 to 11:00, or 8:00 to 10:00, whatever you want. But you know, by 7:00, the reasonable person would say, well, most people are at least up and getting ready to go to work, except for retirees and what have you. But on the weekends, do we want it to be an hour later in the morning?
7:00 to 10:00.
My two cents, since I'm virtual, is, in my perspective, I don't think we get too far off of what we're doing from what Raleigh has established with the noise ordinance. Here's the other piece of it is, as we have a bustling now Main Street project, our times of hours for some businesses and restaurants, it is going to extend to 11:00. And I don't want to prioritize them by removing or creating more ordinances that would prevent customer engagement. So I think what we have now is great person. My two cents.
Okay, well, that's not enough to get out of this activity. What about construction activity hours? Should those be different? Should you be able to engage in construction activity in a residential or business zone district during all daytime hours, which would be until 11:00 at night?
No.
Or should that be more limited? Construction activity?
Agreed, limited.
And then once you get beyond that, how about blasting activity? Should that be more limited than construction? Or would that be the same as construction?
It'd be the same as construction.
So what's ours now? I think it is limited now.
Eight to six for construction activity is eight to six. And blasting activity is 10 to six.
Is this from noise related, lights, just activities itself?
So...
Because here's the thing, there is exceptions. Paul, some of you noticed, like pouring concrete, you have to start early in the morning. So there's always exceptions sometimes.
But that may not create excessive noise.
That's what I'm asking, will we get complaints on those though?
Right. So this is a noise regulation. Even though I think if one were to call the front desk of Town Hall and ask what permitted construction hours are, this would be the number that's used. But there's no rule that tells me I can't be working in my garage after those hours because the rule does apply to everyone. It's a noise ordinance. So if you are able to engage in your activity without noise, and construction activity is a defined term, and that includes landscaping, by the way, if you're able to engage in those activities without noise, then this ordinance doesn't apply.
Where do mowing your grass come in?
Mowing the grass is under landscaping. So yeah, it's under construction activity.
Early as 8:00 a.m.? As early as 8:00 a.m.?
Well, we don't have, well, construction, okay.
We also have, well, so two different things. Commercial landscaping activity is under construction. Lawn care equipment and agricultural field equipment used during daytime hours. So that would extend all the way to 11.
And as early as 7:00.
As early as 7:00.
But you have had people or commercial cutting grass at 10:30 at night. Just to put that out there.
They must be really messing up their lawns.
Just putting that out there.
Yeah, they got headlights on some.
I think the construction and the blasting are fair as where they are. Because I'm thinking they were put in place for a reason. And I'm thinking about those families that the blasting, that stuff can, if you, if that wakes you up at 7:00 in the morning, you're thinking it's the end of the earth. I mean, seriously, that's, those are some pretty serious shakes sometimes. So I think 10 to 6 is fair, in my opinion. And the construction activity, I think 8 to 6, that's fair because I do know that there are some restrictions and exceptions and things that happen in construction. And the summer is very hot for those people that are out there working on that stuff. So the earlier, the better. Those construction and blasting, I feel are okay.
Do you want your next door neighbor mowing the lawn at 7:00 in the morning?
Well, if I had my choice, it would be me mowing at 7:00 in the morning. The earlier, the better, but...
It is the best time to do it.
Okay.
But that's the construction, which is, oh, but residential is 7:00, yeah.
Residential is 7:00 to 11:00.
Right. So I was talking about the construction activity and the blasting. 7:00 to 11:00 for daytime hours, that's... So I think about if we pushed it back to even 8:00. But then I'm a mom, and I'm thinking, my kids are outside playing at 7:00. Is somebody going to come complain about me because my little ones, when they were little, are outside being too loud at 7:00 in the morning? So I'm thinking, trying to think of both sides. And then would you cut it back to 10:00? But when cobblestone is opened up with a possible outside bar?
And wallbrook.
Then what's that going to do to the neighbors that live across the street? So I'm trying to, that's a hard balance right there for us to even make that call because I'm an early bird. If I'm in the bed at 9:30 and they're rocking their music all loud, then, you know, that's a tough call right there.
So let's, so let's, let's think about the outdoor... We have had complaints about outdoor music. We have a condition in the cobblestone project for a rooftop facility of some sort. Last call in North Carolina is 2:00 a.m.
But noise ordinance, 11:00 is pretty reasonable for 11:00 at night. I mean, I would like to think at that point, you know, an outdoor establishment with live music or canned music would be okay toning it down. Doesn't mean they're closing, but at least, you know, toning down whatever noise is going on.
Keeping it to a reasonable level.
Correct.
To a reasonable level. So let's think about, I'm just throwing stuff out there. The demographics that are going to be living there, mostly younger people, possibly, not my age group, I am okay with earlier, you know, quiet hours. But how is that going to be for the rooftop bar, a bunch of young people, and them having to close it down, quiet it down at 11:00? Is that going to be feasible? Or are the police going to be there every night at 11:30?
Well, part of that is establishing criteria that's understandable so that they can be. Because currently, we've had at least one establishment that's been bothered with this at 7:00 in the evening. Because we don't have a well-defined noise ordinance. And that's not acceptable. But 11:00, I mean, because, one of the things is, not only will it affect those establishments that cobblestone, yeah, there's residences around, but it's not in the middle of a neighborhood. But if you have it, you know, later than that, your next door neighbor could be, you know, carrying on at midnight if we change it. And that's going to affect a whole bunch of people that might have the same hours, keep the same hours that you keep, April, so.
Yeah, I don't think you could get away with, like, I don't want to go way into it, but you couldn't get away with, like, you know, this zoning area has this, there's no way you'd want to get involved with all that. We're right against each other, and you can't do all that.
The draft does have a limit. The only zoning limit is business and residential versus industrial. We don't have a limit on industrial zones in terms of their noise hours. In theory, that could be 24 hours a day.
Right.
But other than that, currently, we don't try to be that granular with this. But it could be that way. Let me also suggest to you that in the unreasonable noise definition, a sound that is ordinary and normal in the operation of the business that was approved and permitted to be there, if that's what that business sounds like, and it's not expressly a prohibited noise, for example, Raleigh, until it adopted its new ordinance, had an amplified music ordinance that was separate. And that was designed to address certain concerns in certain entertainment districts that would be outdoors. That's not in this version of this ordinance because we just didn't need it. So, but it's worth thinking about. Are we okay with 1:00 noise of on the rooftop? Is that sanctionable noise? Or is that just, it's noisy on Friday nights out there? I mean, that, it's okay. I know this is tough. This is why, that's why the staff got to this point, and we bring it to you. Think about it?
I think, one, you've done a great job with this. Two, no ordinance anyone puts together is going to be perfect. It's way better than what we have. I would like to provide a couple suggestions, at least to look at, and I don't have them written down, so I'll just send them to you. And maybe others have the same. And let's do our best to put something together with the understanding that it may not be perfect, it's way better than what we have, and we can tweak it as we go based on experiences.
And that is, that was one of the goals. So let me move on very quickly then to get what guidance I can, or to at least put thoughts in your heads. Outdoor entertainment, outdoor sports, entertainment facilities, amphitheater, high school sports, those kind of activities often trigger some competing interests, depending upon where you live or whether your kid is currently attending that school. We're building quite a bit around Roseville High School. There will be, there's a lot of noise that's generated by a middle school and a high school, and that might be okay. The Raleigh ordinance says, it changed. They said, look, if it's normal sounds of a high school, that's how it goes. So it's before the football season, it's time for the drum line to be practicing every night. You're really close to the football season. I mean, that just is just the sound of the season.
And odds are, those aren't going to carry on till 11:00 at night.
No, they're usually in about 10.
Right.
Football. Now, the thing is, sometimes they run late because of shutdown, because of lightning strike or something like that. They could, I think they can, I think they can go to 12 or later probably.
So the way that, the way that we currently have it is, it is a per se rule. If it's normal sounds of a school, it's just not subject to the same stuff. You knew there was a school there. I don't think anyone's really going to be super surprised in the United States that that's what football stadiums can sound like. So that's the way it's currently written. That may not be popular, but that's the way it is. So think about that one. And this is the final. So this is not, at least yet, so far as I know, Captain Haynes can tell me if I'm mistaken on this, we, Roseville does not currently have the same challenges as some of our bigger communities have with public parks and other traditional public forum being a site for amplified sound. Some might call it protest. Quite often, it's more proselytizing with a bullhorn. And so Raleigh has currently gone to a proposal, which is to just say, our public parks don't have amplified music or amplified instruments. They don't have amplified sound. Make as much noise as you want yourself, but you can't use an electronic or electrical device to make it louder in our public parks. You'll see that there is a small section for that in the new ordinance for us to consider. I did not get any negative feedback on that from Parks and Rec, but I don't know that they focused on it because it occurs to me that there could be amplified music in our rented gazebo facilities and things like that.
Amphitheaters.
With Joyner Park, don't they have bands during the summertime? I've been there.
Special events are always excluded. I should have mentioned. Keep in mind, anything the town runs, we've excluded any of those from being excessive noise. We will never sanction ourselves.
So this would be like a family playing music if they had a gathering at one of the amphitheaters? Is this what, this is what this would...
That is not the concern we're addressing, but it could, in theory, the way it's drafted right now, that broadly, might pick that up. Now, again, it would have to be unreasonable noise, but that would be the normal rule. But this is a blanket prohibition to attempt to remove those concerns. I don't know that Roseville has had that yet. Our parks are not, they're not situated as close to a location that might have made that more attractive to folks who wanted to draw attention to themselves, as Raleigh does have that in its central business district. But that is also a section in here and something to think about. I have no idea who this person is, but he was in the public domain. He looks like he would make a lot of noise with that setup. And then this is the final piece, sanctions. The general statutes set up what municipalities can impose in terms of penalties for those who break our rules. And the ordinance currently is pretty stiff, the way I've got it drafted. We know that in reality, the police of Roseville will first seek conformance and a warning. But if they do cite you for a civil penalty, it's a $250 fine.
Do we want to consider up to, or we don't want to get into that?
Civil penalties in the ordinances are stated in an amount. That's just the way the statute's set up. I think it could be written in another way, but 250 is pretty stiff.
Yeah. So this is one of my suggestions, is leave the max in there, but up to, so we have some leeway depending on the situation, which, who wants to get into?
And I would, I would recommend avoiding that. So maybe first offenses, 50 bucks. And then...
Repeated, yeah.
And then ratchet it up. We're capped at $500. And it makes clear that each offense, we've got to pay for the capital project somehow. And subsequent offenses within a 12-month period, each one, each instance is its own violation, are capped by state law at $500. At the same time, there are also misdemeanors. And probably most important... And probably most importantly, as a tool for us, although it's not going to be right now, the immediate concern that was raised for, by a person who raised complaint with Commissioner Vilga about someone who was listening to loud music in their backyard, is injunction. That will be something that will come up with regard to the operation of a business, where the town will take action to get a judge to order them to just stop. Because a business could very well decide, $500? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's just the cost of doing business. So that is, that's also a tool in there. But I did, I did want to bounce off that. First time is 250. Captain Haynes is here and I did kind of drag him out with the chief to make him come out here. I didn't know if you had anything to help us with here.
Evening, everybody. Y'all don't usually see me up here, but Attorney Neal has really described the situation with noise ordinances and how they're enforced. He's described very well. He said a lot of things that I was thinking if I had to come up here and talk in front of you, especially with the difficulty of enforcement and, you know, the reasonable person standard and whatnot. If we're talking about penalties, if, you know, Commissioner Austin, 250 is steep, but it is something that will make you think twice about violating it again.
Yes, sir.
So I'm here for any questions you may have about noise ordinance enforcement. I've been doing it for 24 years, so I can pull from the depth of experience if you have any questions.
How does the typical call currently go when you get a call for service relating to a noise ordinance?
So typically, we'll get the call usually through dispatch. We get a location of the, both the person making the call to 911 and the location of where they think the noise is coming from. Typically, we'll go to the person that has called 911 first, speak with them, and we'll, our officers will try to observe the noise. And in that determination, the officer will, they'll have to make a judgment call. Like, is this noise that I'm hearing or not hearing excessive or unnecessary or something that is outside the boundary, as Attorney Neal has put? Upon that determination, if that's, if we determine that, yes, that's too loud, that is something that's disturbing, you know, your peace at home, then we'll go to the source of the noise. And like you were saying, we like to educate first, maybe even provide them a copy of the ordinance and say, look, I was over wherever I was at, I could hear your music or whatever noise it is that's being created. We want to get voluntary compliance with this ordinance. So please turn your music down, reorient your speakers, do something to mitigate the noise that these folks are hearing over here. They're your neighbors too, so let's all be considerate of everybody's neighbors. If we get subsequent calls up there, then we start thinking about written warnings, civil citations through the town. I've never had to make an arrest for a noise ordinance violation, hence the misdemeanor. Usually, most folks will comply. We don't usually have an issue with that. And we have good citizens in Roseville and just like anywhere else in North Carolina, and most folks want to just comply with what's going on.
Captain, any sense based on your experience, time of day for the bulk of the complaints?
So here in Roseville, going along with the mayor was saying, we have received them as early as 7:00 PM going on through 10:00 PM, especially during, and when 4th July is around or any holidays, we'll get fireworks calls. Those generate calls to 911. So we have got noise ordinance complaints from 7:00 PM all the way through 2:00 in the morning. But I would say in Roseville, the predominance are before 11:00.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Captain? What was up?
So.
Yes, sir.
Would you be in favor of a normal hours being 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
That seems to be the typical, from what I have experienced with 7:00 to 11:00 is a very typical timeframe for most entities. So going with, you know, the majority of what other entities or municipalities, counties are doing, I think that's along the same standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a certain sound decimal?
So I might not be the right person to ask about decibels, being the firearms instructor and not having very good hearing.
That's why I'm trying to solve with the $250 fine.
But I don't have the facts in front of you. I think running your lawn mower is about 70 decibels. I might be way off on that, but it's a loud noise, but you're cutting your grass. So I think I would compare that around 70. Gunfire is about 114, depending, 120, if I'm not too far off.
Every 10 is double.
Yeah.
Did you have to?
PNC gets a little bit over, at hockey games, gets a little bit over 100, 105. When you hit 100, that's pretty loud.
And what we know from the complaints that come in, decibel is not, it's not the whole thing. You can have a low rumble that will drive someone crazy, right?
Or the type of noise.
It's the type of noise.
They just don't want, they don't like it.
It's, 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 pets are listed in here, roosters. There are, there are certain noises that would never work if we were to have the officer just use a meter. So we're, we are desperately hoping to avoid the decibel standard and go a different way.
Just, just a couple closing things. I didn't see anything in here talking about a downtown concept. That may be something to consider.
It is.
Because we're going to be faced more and more. I know Cobblestone is a private, I don't even think it's got public streets in there, does it? So that's a little bit different, but a lot of these towns are struggling with downtown, noise downtown, because you're having festivals down there, Thursday nights, Friday night things and stuff like that.
So the way we've, I keep saying "we," but I think it was just me. Entertainment district is sometimes broken out with its own set, kind of like the way the parks, you could just set a whole set of rules. The way that I have set this up is to carve out three categories that hopefully capture all of this, and I'm sure it doesn't, but that's the hope. You have emergency work. So if it's emergency work, it can be unreasonable and excessive noise. It's just categorically, sometimes you have to make a lot of noise to protect public safety. So emergency work is accepted out. Special events are accepted out. So parades, fairs, carnival, permitted special event, anything permitted through the town, a private event permitted through the town is a temporary special event, or a town-sponsored event is going to be a categorical okay. Because the assumption is the town has already made the assessment as to whether that would be too loud and would regulate itself. So those are two. It doesn't address this idea of an entertainment district separately. Some communities have had it. Raleigh went away from it and tried to capture things in a more general sense, but it is certainly worth an idea.
Because I do think, I do think we're trying to promote downtown stuff, more activities downtown. We're trying to promote it to be a destination and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll be a big turnoff to say you can't have a rooftop bar or something like that.
Right.
So we've got to, you know, I don't know if we designate that out as a, you know, part of something.
We could, so.
Something to think about.
And that is an excellent point. So if you, if you go through the structure, 132.03 sets the general rule where the assessment will be made by the officer whether it's unreasonable. And then there's exceptions that are just okay. We're going to take, we would say judicial notice, we're going to take notice that these kind of things are okay. Outdoor, restaurant, bar is just okay in a properly zoned district, obviously, not at Commissioner Paul's house kind of idea. That might not be okay. We could do that.
And would that be like, we could say downtown, all the main street? I'm not sure.
Could be in the TC district, for example. We have that special town center district. That would just be a categorical. Police department would know that when they get a call relating to that, it's in its own separate category.
Yeah. I want to add a comment, you know, providing a little feedback here from some citizens, but you mentioned fleshing some of this out with June on parks and stuff. I think, I think the parks, anything to do with the parks, we probably need to get June and Paul and the Parks and Rec Board, maybe just to put the eyes on it and give any comments on that. I think a good idea to include them, you know, on that.
I don't know, I cannot recall whether June had any particular comments, but he has seen it.
Because I think our parks really, other than events, probably don't need amplification and stuff like that. But, you know, it'd be good to work it out with them.
Yeah, we certainly don't need to write a, we don't need to create a section if it's just not an issue. We don't need to create a problem. The ordinance is long enough.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. All right. We do have a closed session, executive session we need to do. So before we do that, it's been a kind of a long night. We've been here two and a half hours, so we do want to take a break now. Before I do that, just want to ask real quick, does the board, Alinwood, do you have anything to close with? I'll let you go first.
I do not, Mayor. Thank you for asking.
Okay. The board, anything? Eric, anything before we go in closed session?
Real quick, April 27th Arbor Day celebration, Main Street Park, 12 to 3. Everybody show up.
Be there. Be there or be square.
All right.
And you giving away trees?
They're doing trees and they're doing pollinator plants as well, too. So if you don't want a tree, we've got other stuff.
Right.
So just show up.
Just come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just hang out.
Good.
As well as coffee with a veteran, this 30 at 9:00 to 11:00 at a rise.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you, board. So I think we're going to take a recess into, into executive session. So who has that? Is that you, April?
I do. I move that the board go into closed session to discuss a confidential personnel matter pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318 dot 11A 3 and A 6 of the North Carolina General Statutes.
Second. Okay. Got a motion second. Any other discussion? Not hearing any? I think clerk will probably have to take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Snee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vilga?
Aye.
Okay. I think, I don't hear any ayes, anybody. So with that, we will recess, adjourn, not adjourn, but recess into closed session. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.